All right. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Tuesday, March 28th Board of Selectmen meeting, Select Board meeting. We do have cable access here, live broadcasting and recording this meeting. We'll get started with the Pledge of Allegiance. Ally, if you can lead us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, fabulous. Is anyone here for citizens input on Zoom or anything submitted ahead of time? No, all right. So we are going to go right into our first item, which is a use of public way application for NAC 5K and superhero dash. We do have Stephanie walking in right now, so we have a full board here. All right, and Kristi Ann, are you here for the first item? All right, just give us a second because we can't hear you. Let us, give us a nod if you can hear us. Okay. She doesn't show muted. Are you still muted? No, okay, talk now. We might be able to hear you now.
Can you hear me now?
Okay, all right, great. We can hear you and you can hear us. So I think, I think this is the first time that we've seen this particular race, which is why you're here, although the route that you're going is something that we have seen before. So we'll start off by, if you can tell us a little bit about your event, where you're starting, the route, where you're ending, safety, and then we'll see if we have any questions for you. And then if we don't, we'll go ahead and approve it. So if you could just introduce yourself.
So I'm Kristi McDougal. I'm the Community Outreach Director for the Norfolk County District Attorney's Office, but also for the Norfolk Advocates for Children, which is right in Foxborough, Massachusetts. So we're the affiliate nonprofit location of the Norfolk DA's office. We're the Child Abusey Center. Our mission is to keep kids safe. April is Child Abuse Prevention Month. So in hopes of abating child abuse, we want to host this 5K. The starting line and the finish line is at the Norfolk Advocates for Children, which is 12 Payson Road. We're going to have volunteers help guide the route. We're going to have details. I already contacted Foxborough Police Station. So we could handle those details with them and make sure they're in the appropriate places. We are following the Bailey's Run route. So that route, I believe, is a week or two prior to us. So we're going to do the same exact route. We are going to have volunteers, any busy corners as well with the police, just to make sure people know where they're going. And we'll have signs as well.
All right, great. And so your start, if I'm thinking of it correctly, is almost directly across the street from where Bailey's Run is going to begin?
Exactly.
Yeah, so although it's a different location, it's just a different side of the road. So I don't think there was any concerns from police or public safety about starting there, and it sounds like you've been in touch with them. So I don't have any questions. Does anyone on the board have any further questions for Kristi?
No.
No? All right, great. So with that, we'll take a motion and a vote.
Motion to approve use of public way application for NAC 5K and superhero dash.
On Sunday, April 30th, from 9:00 to 12:00. I just have that.
Okay.
Second.
All right, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Right.
All right, good luck with your event. It sounds like it'll be a great event for a good cause.
Absolutely. Would love to see you all there. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you. All right, and our next item is a public hearing where it was withdrawn. I don't know if we have to wait till 7:15, Bill?
I think, I think it's probably okay.
Okay, all right. So the applicant has voluntarily withdrawn its application from the board for the Class III license. Thus, the hearing is, we need to close the hearing. So there's no further action warranted by this board. So I think with that, we can have a motion. Do we need to open the public hearing? We have a motion to open it.
The hearing's already open.
Yeah, I don't think we need a motion to open it then because that's in here.
Just to close it, yeah.
Okay, just a motion to withdraw.
Okay, motion to accept the withdrawal of the Class III auto license for Cooks Towing and Transport, Inc. at 24 East Belcher Road and close the public hearing.
Second.
Any further discussion?
So what does that mean going forward? He's not applying for it and he can't have all that stuff on?
So this will be now be a zoning matter, so?
Oh, okay, that's okay.
We, as a board, don't have any action in front of us for this, so?
It's all, it goes back to zoning.
Yeah, so this will continue with the zoning enforcement.
Yeah, that's what I was looking for, okay.
Okay, all right. So we had discussion. All those in favor?
Right.
All right, great. All right, so are you ready if we take you early? Is that ever a problem? Okay. All right, so next we have our wonderful Human Services Department here for an update. So I think most people in town know who you are, but if you can just introduce yourselves. And then while we have Ally here, we do have a public way application as well that we'll roll into right after that as well.
Hi, I'm Mark Craig. I'm the Director of Human Services for the Town of Foxborough.
Renee Tosi, the Director of the Recreation Division.
Ally Rodriguez, Director of Veteran Services.
Perfect, thank you. So we'll get started. If you could see me sweating over in the corner. That's why I always bring two pieces of technology in. The iPad worked while Zoom updated on the laptop. So welcome. So we're here to talk tonight about, give you our yearly update for the Human Services Department. So just want to remind everyone what the Human Services Department looks like. Last year, we joined up with Veterans Recreation Council on Aging and Human Services to create One Happy Little Family. So this is our staff organizational chart. So first, I'm going to start with the Council on Aging and Human Services. And I know we're pressed for time, so I'm going to kind of go fast. If I talk too fast, just let me know and I'll slow down. But I want to be cognizant of the time. So for those who don't know, we're located at the 75 Central Street. It's the Foxborough Senior Center. We host a variety of senior programs throughout the year. It's a very, very active place. We have a lot of seniors' varying abilities. There's programs for those who want to just sit and play cards or there's activities that you want to get up and dance and do some serious aerobic zumba. We go on trips. There's a trip coming up to Italy in a few weeks. It's a very, very active place. I'm very happy with how the Senior Center works. We also have human services down there. So in the year 2000, there was actually two separate departments, Council on Aging and Human Services. Those two were merged. We have two incredible social workers, Pam McGuire and Kate Finieri. If there's anyone in need in the community who wants to, you know, maybe even access to resources, anyone over the age of 18 is welcome to meet with Kate and Pam, even if it's just something first time of wondering about EBT applications or housing applications. They are the know-it-alls that really can help people get the access to the resources that they're looking for. So one thing you'll see is we're getting back to our normal with our average daily attendance. We really spiked in 2019 and then took a drop off in 2020, but things are getting back to normal. On a very busy Wednesday, we normally see somewhere between 150 and 175 people. And then on a Friday, which is only half day, we see between 75 and 85 people. So it kind of balances throughout the week. On average, we have, we have over 40 people who are leased at the building once a week. So if you can kind of, those are kind of our regulars. And then there's people who are there once, once a month or maybe just once every year, just for a very specific program. But it is a very active place. So coming up this year, and I don't have the official dates yet, we have our Senior Olympics. This will be our fourth year. We did this last year. This is our first year back from COVID. And so we're excited to get back to do this again. It's a week-long activity with seniors. Anyone, we have a Scrabble tournament for those who aren't looking to walk. Hopefully be up at Gillette for a one-mile walk. We're also doing a softball throw. It's a very great celebration that we're trying to get people out and get more activity throughout the community and get beyond our borders at the Senior Center. We also have transportation. So we have the Van Gogh and the Other Van Gogh. So this year, we were also able to transfer over our old Ford Taurus for the new Chevy Traverse. This was paid for by Brigham and Women's Grant that I got two years ago. And we have a third year of that grant coming up. So more than likely, we'll be able to replace the Taurus, which was going to be our third vehicle, but then was a branch fell on it. So we'll be able to replace that with another vehicle so we can have all three vehicles going throughout the week. If you've seen them, they're all over town. Most of the time, they stay within 11 miles. We do group shopping trips for those who don't have access to a vehicle or uncomfortable driving. But we also do trips down to the Cape Cod Canal once a week during the summer. So try and get beyond the community for those who just say, I don't want to drive. I don't want to spend money on gas. So that van is great for those group trips. And that Chevy Traverse is great for some of the local medical rides, too. So anyone who looks, is looking to book a ride, they just have to call us before 11 o'clock the day before to book for the following day. Alternative funding sources, this is something that I'm pretty passionate about. So over the last year, the Council on Aging was able to get $145,000 of funds that were not tax dollars, that helped support our operation. And that also doesn't include the general, all of our programs at the Senior Center are self-funded. So if we have an exercise class, the money that comes in from that will then pay for a free program later in the week. But we do have that transportation grant. And we also, this year, presented to this board back in September, our Interface. It's a resource line for those who are in need, who just want to have access to resources in the community. It's a great call line where your match, residents are matched with mental health resources in the surrounding areas. With that, I'll hand it over to Renee for recreation.
Thank you.
We got a question.
Yeah, of course.
Just a question, Mark. Who's, who's the contact with Brigham and Women's? It's nice to see them kicking in the air in a significant way.
I'm blanking on her name. It's Kristen or Christina up there that's one of the grant managers. And it works, it's a great relationship. We were able to apply for the grant because they were, they got a new MRI machine three years ago. And again, we're on the second year of a three-year grant.
Thank you. So, whoop. These are our three properties that we oversee, which has all of our fields, all of our fields. We have the Booth Complex, which is where my office is located. And that has the newer playground down there, which is where we're going to be building the pavilion. Then there's Payson and Mill Street. Mill Street got quite a bit of renovations over the past year. We were able to open the pool, which was phenomenal. We did some landscaping down there, put in a new snack shack, some new patio and a new ramp. So that's looking good down there. This is just some pictures of the pool. We do sell memberships for the pool. It can be a family membership, an individual membership, or you can pay as you go per person. We actually sold more memberships last year than we have ever sold. It was great. A lot of people had said, you know, jokingly, things like, oh, I used to just come to the pool and I thought it was like my backyard pool and now I have to share it with others. But it's great, and having the snack shack has been a great addition.
And the heater, wasn't it, isn't it warmer now, too?
Yes, and it's warmer now, too. That's a huge addition. We actually had the seniors do a water aerobics class and they much appreciate warm water. The farmer's market is another thing that we run through the rec department. We are in dire need of some vendors. So this is your time now to apply for a spot. You don't have to commit to the entire market, but we would love more produce vendors and would really like to get it going and get the foot traffic there. And it's on Thursday nights, which is in conjunction with the JC Summer Concert Series, which has been great, just trying to get the foot traffic uptown.
Are you still doing it on the Common? Wasn't there talk about maybe?
There was talk about maybe changing it up. We really couldn't find the ideal location, so we're going to give it one last try. And this year, we've decided that we're going to try and have maybe some of our counselors or some other helpers come and help people move their food or produce or products onto the, onto the Common. That was our biggest complaint from the vendors, that it's just hard to park far away and have to lug all of your stuff up. Whereas a lot of the other markets, you can just park your car on the Common or park it in the lot that, that, you know, the market is at. So it's a lot of work to get up and back. We're also hoping to maybe reserve three spots, let them unload, and then have them move over to an off-site lot and then, you know, walk back over. So we're hoping that'll maybe entice more people to come and be a vendor. The Booth Summer Program is coming up. It is one of our biggest programs that we have. It is filling up nicely, which we're very happy about. And that, you know, runs for eight weeks over the summer. We have added, for our second year, the Middle School Adventure, which is actually almost full, which I'm very excited about. It was a huge hit last year. We added the sixth graders to move up there. There's some pretty fun field trips that I think the kids are really going to enjoy that they never got to do, like being at Booth. Now it's just the big kids can do the bigger field trips.
Quick question, Renee?
Yes.
So you said it's almost filled for the sixth to ninth. How many people is that?
So we'll fill, 50, we'll take 50 for the sixth and, sixth to ninth grade, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My turn, Foxborough Veteran Services. So this is just very basic, what my office does. We service veterans and their families, and I think that gets lost. And a lot of times, a lot of widows come to see me or children of veterans, sometimes ex-spouses of veterans looking for the benefits, but unfortunately, you can't, you can't assist ex-spouses. We do a lot with grave markers and ordering flags for the town. Every year before Memorial Day, the American Legion, the Boy Scouts, the VFW will go around to St. Mary's and Rock Hill and replace all the flags on veteran graves, and it's amazing to see. And we're always looking for volunteers for that, too. So if you want to come out, I think it's the Friday before Memorial Day, you just head on down to Rock Hill and St. Mary's and just replace flags. And it's just, it's really cool, and we will always take volunteers. Some pictures from my, my year last year. So upper left-hand corner, the American Bombshells. I got them for Veterans Day. And it was the, I'm going to say that it was the best-attended Veterans Day I think Foxborough has ever seen. Going, that's on the record. It was a lot of hard work, but it was incredible to see the veterans come out and they were clapping and singing. And it was, you know, old-school music, right? Like the Andrew Sisters, but everybody had a great time. The lower picture with the gentleman with the two Marines, that is Silver Star recipient Jonathan Hill. He was our guest speaker. He fought in the Battle of Kamdesh, which is commonly known as the Outpost. Two Medal of Honor recipients came out of that battle. And I didn't learn until later that Jonathan was actually put in for the Medal of Honor and denied it, says, I don't want it. So he could, he was this close to becoming a Medal of Honor recipient, but chose not to, not to accept it. The two Marines that you see, they are actually Marine recruiters right here in Foxborough, and we have a great relationship. Every time I need them, they're there, they're, they're out there. Memorial Day, Veterans Day, they're just, they're great, great guys. The corner left, I took my veterans group to the CB Museum. Being an Army veteran, my field trips tend to be more to the Army side. And I get a Navy guy, he's like, what about us Navy guys? He's like, you know what, you're right. You find a spot where you want to go and we'll go. And someone says, let's go to the CB Museum, which was cool because I didn't even know it existed. We got a private tour from the gentleman who runs the museum. And we spent all afternoon and then I took him to Chick-fil-A. And a lot, a lot of the veterans, it was their first time eating at Chick-fil-A. It was my first time, too. So we're like, oh, this is a new experience, right? Great chicken sandwiches.
Construction Battalion?
I'm sorry?
Construction, CB is Construction Battalion?
Correct, yep, they are Navy construction workers, yep.
Excuse me, where is the museum?
That's in Quonset Point in Rhode Island.
Really?
Yeah, I had no idea. Yep, didn't know it existed. Yep, it was really cool. And it's, it was free, and they open limited hours. But you just walk right in and they have, from the inception of the CBS all the way to today. And then there's a little bit of history about the Quonset Point and how that came about, and then World War II. And there's real artifacts, and it's just, it's an incredible place. I highly recommend it. Then you see the middle picture, that was Memorial Day. The female on the right, that is Commander Billy Farrell. She is the first female commander of the USS Constitution. I met her at a gala and I said, hey, listen, this is who I am. I'd love to have you come out. And she's like, yeah, sure. So I never hear from her again. And then on Memorial Day, I see these, these Navy sailors in like old-timey uniforms. And I run over there, I'm like, who are you guys? And they're like, we're from the Constitution. I'm like, oh, my gosh, I didn't know you guys were coming. Come on in. So they ended up marching in a parade. And then Colonel Oberton was our guest speaker. And then the picture on the right, that is me and Seth Moulton in Washington, DC, trying to push a bill which will give county VSOs more training, more money, because every other state besides the Commonwealth of Massachusetts has VSOs per county. And they're not that great because it's one VSO and hundreds and hundreds of veterans. So this bill, if passed, would actually give the counties more money to hire and train more VSOs. Memorial Day, it's coming up, so I've already started planning. We are going to talk about the Spanish-American War. So this Memorial Day is all about the Spanish-American War. The Historical Commission did a fantastic job finding eight veterans that's from Foxborough who served in the Spanish-American War. So Mr. Jack Othlet will be our keynote speaker. And he's going to talk about the research and who the veterans are and what they did. So I'm really looking forward to that. We will have our annual parade. Of course, I'm going to feed everybody. So it's business as usual for Memorial Day.
So I know we're running out of time, so I'll go really quickly. So obviously, we've been together as one happy little family for a little over a year now. So some of the things that were, have been really successful, that trip that Ally was talking about, we used our senior van to take the group down there. Maybe we would have done that otherwise, but also maybe not because it's something that, okay, how do we, how do I justify saying we're going to take away from seniors that have taken a trip to people going on a trip with Ally? So that's one of the great coordinated successes. Another thing we do is something they call No Wrong Door. So if someone comes and has, you know, questions about senior programs with Renee, Renee might not know every single thing that's at, at the Senior Center, but might have some basic knowledge. We also have coordinated successes with, you know, if someone's out, we have the phones transferred so that way, if no one picks up the phone, someone doesn't immediately go to Facebook and say, I've tried to call the rec office and no one's there. Well, it's, you know, it's only been an hour. So we have phones go back and forth. We also have that senior water aerobics program that Renee talked about, which was, was very, very successful, and seniors really, really liked that. Also, just logistical things, that it's much easier, you know, departments of one or departments of two, coordinated successes and making sure logistics is a lot easier when it's a collective group of all kind of working towards the same goal and mindset and making the town a much better place. So it is a fantastic team. I'm a little biased, but I'm very happy with our, with the success of the last year. Also, just having up on the screen, we have a lot of people that help us out, a tremendous amount of people. If I didn't put their names up there, I apologize already. But it's something where we are so forward-facing. We have a lot of people in the community who get, have access to our programs and services, and we need a lot of help for that. So that is just people that we are, we really appreciate. Any questions? It's a lot.
There's a quiz at the end.
I heard it at AdCom. And I have to say, though, hearing you guys at AdCom, I feel like having the departments together, it just made sense. And I think over the last year, it's really illustrated how much it does make sense. So I think it's been a great success.
Huge success.
Bringing the three departments together, for sure. I don't think we can say that again next year because I'll be like, old business at that time. But I'm still reeling on how well it's worked so far.
No, I think it's, it's great. I enjoy your presentation. You actually stayed within the time limit.
I had so much more to say. Mark told me I couldn't say it, so.
Congratulations, but no, you know, you've tripled your effectiveness bringing the departments together.
Yeah, you're kind of like a lone man on an island, you know, before this. In some ways, you know, or two people on an island.
Right.
So it's definitely brought it together, so. Any other comments or questions before we? We're going to actually, we're going to vote on the Memorial Day event while we have you here. I know you just teed it up and talked about it, but we do have a formal motion if there's no more questions on that one. Just the use of public way application, since it is the parade. And it's the usual Central Street around the Common, although it goes the opposite Founder's Day. Learned that last year.
Right, yeah, that was a discussion last year.
Fun fact.
Same thing, yeah, everything stays the same. There's no changes.
Okay, all right, great. So I think we're ready for a motion. Unless there's any questions on that application for Memorial Day?
No.
Okay.
A motion to approve the use of public way application for the Memorial Day Parade on May 29th from 10:00 AM, 12:00 PM on Central Street and around the Common.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? All right, thank you so much for all the work your three departments did.
Appreciate it.
Have a good one. We could just talk about that real quick. Let's do it while you're here, if you don't mind. So I am going to go a little bit out of order. And we had an action, nope, it's under, it's under item six. So we do have to, you know, although we're not going to take, we don't need to take positions on all the board of selectman articles because we went through that ad nauseam, I think, last year, that in effect, by us putting it on the warrant, we approve, you know, what's going on there. But we do have to take a vote on the renaming of the pavilion per the asset policy. So I don't, I think we've talked about this and everyone knows about it, but this is more of a formality to have the steps that it can go on the warrant for town meeting, to have that final step of the vote. So I think with that, anything else to add, really? I think we've talked about it quite a bit. But let's, we'll take that vote while you were here, so thank you for doing that.
We just figured if there were questions, our board voted unanimously. Next step is you and then town meeting.
Yeah, we, I heard about it at AdCom. I think maybe you were there, so I think we've all heard about this quite a bit, and it's a great thing.
It is.
All right, so I think we're ready to take that motion on 6.2.
Okay, motion to approve the naming of the Deb Giardino Pavilion at Booth Playground.
Second.
Any further discussion?
She, she likes Deb?
Debbie, it's actually Debbie.
Debbie.
D-E-B-B-I-E.
Okay.
That's what it should be.
On the discussion, it's the Debbie.
Okay.
Okay, Giardino Pavilion. All right, so good, good catch, Seth.
Good catch, Seth.
All right, all those in favor? All right, great. Thanks for getting that done while you were here for that, too, as well. All right, so we are a little ahead of schedule. This is fabulous for once, although we did have a canceled item, so I guess that won't happen. All right, so Matt, I see you're out there. Is anyone else joining you? Are you ready to get going?
Absolutely ready.
All right. All right, we're ready to have you. Thanks for being flexible. All right, so this is our Health Department update. We do have two departments today because we got a little off track with some of the craziness of last month and, you know, getting the new town manager hired. So thank you for your flexibility, both on that, if anyone had to shift.
So hi, everybody. Matthew Brennan, Director of Public Health. You know, it was hard to kind of fit everything that we've done in the Health Department for the last year into 10 slides, but I think I did my best. The biggest change over the last year is really our structure. Organizationally, we've grown quite a bit. So as you know, we received the Public Health Excellence Grant, and because of that, we get 220,000 or more dollars a year from the state to really develop a shared services program through throughout our region. So not only now are we, you know, we were sort of a small health department, now we're almost a regional hub. So we've expanded quite a bit this year. And again, we may be expanding or have the ability to expand regionally more through a capacity assessment that the state, the Department of Public Health is doing right now. They're going to look at our region and say, you know, this is what your region is excelling at, this might be, you know, a poor spot, and they're going to try to fund those, you know, the the things that we aren't doing as well in order to improve the area. So I'm actually expecting to get those results this week. I haven't seen them yet, but I think, you know, more will will come about that in the future.
And not to sell yourself short, I think you spearheaded a lot of that regional piece, right? So take credit for that.
I have. So the next thing is, one thing that I'm trying to do is really update and consolidate the Board of Health regulations. As you can see over here on the left, this is, you know, the binder that I was given that said, hey, here are your regulations. And then when we really looked, we actually, you can see some handwritten ones in there that we found after doing some research. So really, what I'm trying to do is, you know, work with the board to consolidate everything, update everything. I mean, we have regulations that go back to 1995, so, you know, it's 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 time to look at some of these things, and I'll be ready soon. I want to make sure the board's happy with them, and then, you know, we'll get them to the the this document, these completed regulations to the, all the town boards and commissions and the public at large, really, for comment. And, you know, we'll be looking for input. So that's kind of one thing that I've been working on this year. Another grant we received is a Community Health Network Alliance grant, Chanafonds. We tried to, you know, after the pandemic is starting to wind down, we really wanted to get people out and about and get them interested about health and wellness again. So, you know, we we offered some free diabetes classes, basic nutrition, tried to sponsor some water aerobics classes and and other things. Lightly attended, I think Mark has me beat, and Renee, they're the professionals at it. So, you know, we've kind of switched gears and, you know, I'm really trying to support them more with their work, with trying to, you know, support them to do health and wellness activities and and really do what I can to help them. Another thing that I've been working on is, you know, I get the question a lot, you know, what, what should the town, what does the town have to work on? What isn't Foxborough really doing well? One of the things I could say is environmentally. We have a lot of environmental cleanup sites here in town. Properties like 131 Morris Street where it's a, it's a complicated site, and there's real no strategic plan for the town to kind of deal with a property like that. So I asked the University of Connecticut, they have a technical assistance for a brownfield program, and what they're going to do is they're, they are actually going to look at all, because 131 Morris Street's actually seven different parcels, all of which have different, you know, environmental concerns, as well as actually the the town space as well, the rec depart, the public land there as well. They all have different concerns about them, so they're actually going to take a look at all the environment, environmental data and do a data gap analysis to figure out, you know, what do we need there to even come up with a strategic plan to deal with the property? And not to mention, you know, even going beyond 131 Morris's others, such as the Evelyn Porter Estate and the Seltsom Junkyard, which is on Oak Street, which has had some EPA involvement as well. So that's one thing I've been trying to spearhead as well. Another thing that I've been trying to do, which I don't think the town had done before I arrived, was property receivership. We do have some properties in town that I would call a public nuisance, so this is an example of one. As you can see in the pictures, it's filled with trash and garbage, structurally unsound porch, the columns collapsing, and just really, it's a nuisance to the neighbors. So I've worked with the Attorney General's Office to really, to appoint a receiver. They're filing it for us, we've filled out the paperwork and submitting it to the court, and we're, basically what that does is, it'll ask the court to, to have someone independently repair those violations that we, I cite in the reports, and they would have a super lien on the property. And that would allow them to quickly sell it, turn it over at either public auction or another way, any court approved way. And that way, you know, something happens, it gets renovated, and those conditions are abated because, as you can see, they're so bad. So I've been working on that, and hopefully, you know, we'll have this and other properties as they come up turned around when I can.
How did it get to that state, Matt? How did it end up like that?
So I believe that property, the owner abandoned it and just, they didn't come back, and it's been years.
Taxes are behind.
Taxes are behind, water's behind.
Okay.
And they've had no response to us or the Attorney General's Office, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Is that a candidate for a tear down and building something else there?
So not for me. I know the Historical Commission, and I've dealt with them, and they have some concerns about that. It is a large lot, and it is a historical house. You know, I'm just asking the court to fix the violations that I have cited, which includes, you know, the trash, it's open to the weather, and once that's cured, you know, we're fine. So I wouldn't, I wouldn't put stipulations on who bought it or who would be able to fix it, as long as my code violations were corrected, that would satisfy me. But it would still have to go through the planning process, building department process.
Taxes that are, yeah.
Tax title issues.
Yeah, once you get to a certain, certain being that far behind, then the town is able to seize the property? Is that how that works? At some point, at some point?
Ultimately, if 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 it gets, it goes through the land court issues, and then those things come back to us as, you know, it comes back to the town, the town can then take title to it. That takes a lot of time, though, unfortunately.
Yeah.
Is the Attorney General's Office usually amenable to requests like this?
Absolutely. So they actually have a whole program dedicated to this, and it's it's free for the town to have their services, they're just a call away, and they work with many other area communities doing the same thing.
Right.
Yeah, the idea being that these, these are valuable properties, and why, and they shouldn't sit vacant. I mean, with a, with a shortage of housing, this is, this is the prime candidate for that.
Yep, absolutely. So now, getting on to, you know, what I'll be working on in the future, I'm sure everyone's aware, the Attorney General's Office has announced many settlement agreements with the opioid manufacturers and drug companies, so Johnson and Johnson, CVS, Walgreens, Walmart, Teva. So, you know, what does that mean for the town? Basically, currently, these are the funds right now that the town of Foxborough has received, so almost 114,500 dollars that we've received so far. There are limited uses to these funds, is, you know, as you can see here, to use these funds, you know, we have to support people in treatment and recovery, treat, use it for harm reduction measures and prevention and education. So, I mean, there's stipulations that have to be put on it, and we also have to get the public's input, so the people in the community that have been affected by opioids, we have to take their input. Altogether, you know, I I have it down here on the bottom right, 442,000 is actually the total amount, so that will be getting over 13, 15 years' time. So right now, we're sort of, I think we're waiting for the new town manager to kind of get on board, and we'll be looking to start these conversations relatively soon regarding what we're going to do with these funds, considering, you know, they're already coming in, and whether that's regionally or just ourselves, and, but I, you know, I know many departments have already had interest in trying to do more to help the opioid problems within the area community.
Do you have to use them by a certain time, or?
No, we we just have to report the use of them. I'm not aware of any limitation on time.
But we can, regional or town?
Absolutely. They recommend regional. That way, you know, you kind of maximize the funds, but, you know, it's with so many, so many different departments being able to use them, you know, it's going to be, it'll be a lot. But, well, I mean, we're going to get all the right players in the room, and we'll have those conversations and figure out what we can do. And that is it. That's all I have for you. That was kind of my year summed up. If you have any questions for me, I'd be glad to take them.
Can you go back one slide? I had a question.
Absolutely.
Item six, support pregnant parenting women and their families, including babies with neonatal absinthe syndrome. What are the programs available in the area now? I know Knowit had some of these programs.
You know, that's.
Now Brockton is offline.
Yeah, that, that's a good, I would have to do my research on that. I'm not aware of what's around. I know there has been, with the closure recently of Stewart over here, there, there is less. So, but yeah, I would have to look, look that up.
It's great, and it's great to see how much of it's proactive versus reactive, and you leading the charge in a lot of that regional stuff, so great work, it's really impressive.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions for the board?
No, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Can I just say for one thing? I just, and Matt's, I just, this is for Matt's benefit as well, that we have come a long, long way in the, in the health operation, and I appreciate Matt's efforts to do this. We've never seen this kind of activity in a long, long time, so I, I'm really grateful for the fact that your, your team is sort of starting to flourish a little bit.
It is.
And it's really great to see that, and it's under your leadership, so I appreciate that.
And while doing that, you know, kind of during a pandemic, too, is even.
Exactly, and it was, that was not, not an easy thing to pull off, so I appreciate that, and it's like, you know, we're fortunate to have guys like you and with Mark and, you know, the the great work that they do, and really appreciate all the efforts you put in.
Yeah, no, I, you, you have a great team here, so, and it makes it easier to do a good job, so thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Thank you. All right. All right, so next we have the annual town meeting warrant review, and there is a new warrant I, that's out there. I don't know exactly, I know I saw some flying around today with updates, it's probably.
It's updated.
Right up, right up, right updated. We're going to skip the first one, the naming of the pavilion, since we already did that. Are we ready to vote on the warrant tonight? Do we need to keep it open for anything else? Bill, I know there was still changes going around, so my, I'm hesitant to vote tonight?
So, yeah, they, so I think the, I just saw something that was as late as like 5:00 tonight, that came in from Pat. So I'm not sure, this, is this the, this the very latest wa, version of it?
Yeah.
It just came through?
But we can, we can vote on it next meeting.
You, you can, I mean, just to make sure that there's no, there were a couple minor edits, I think, but they were just strictly edits.
Just for your benefit, like, stuff that's going around now is like select board versus Board of Selectmen, and we decided we are going to stay with Board of Selectmen because the AG's office hasn't approved it yet, and Bob did something with the ballots like that, so to keep things consistent, so a lot of what's going around right now, I would call, is more minor type of cleanup stuff.
More housekeeping, more housekeeping.
Yeah, but, um.
Yeah, I was surprised at some of the, maybe it was in the previous articles, but a lot of cleanup around definitions. And what that suggests to me is there's been problems in these areas because there hasn't been clarity.
Is it zoning you're referring to, Dennis?
Yeah, like the, your definitions of, you know, the warehouse, different, you know, type of warehouses, and then definitions of auto graveyard, things like that, junkyard. I mean, we've even heard some of this discussion here, so it's nice to see that there's a lot of cleanup here.
Right, and I, I think what happens is, as you might expect, I see you saw it with Matt tonight, and with Mark, and the, and the convergence of new eyes on things, that you, you're able to see things and have a better perspective of the situation, and then, and then suggest changes that will help the situation to make it better for the town. So, you know, this is an evolving process. Every single year, we go through changes, but you're right, Dennis, I think this is a case where we're seeing things that that really do make sense to to make changes at this point in time.
All right, so, I mean, I will call your attention, though, if, I forget who was at AdCom or if anyone was, but there was some back and forth on our article that was to allow us flexibility on the time and place. It literally just says now at 7:30 or another time or place that the Board of Selectmen deem appropriate, so it's, it's pretty minor. I know Pat had given us some options that I thought was a little bit, probably more than what we were intending to do, so we, we slimmed that down a little bit since last week's AdCom meeting. And that will be presented tomorrow. So Bill, you're going to AdCom tomorrow, right?
Yep.
Because I, I cannot make that one.
Yep, I'll be there tomorrow.
So I, I, I did present it last, last week, but we did make some changes to the language, so I don't anticipate any questions, but I think Bill can handle that if anything comes up, because it's pretty, it's pretty straightforward.
Pretty straightforward.
Yeah, and Raffaela has that one, and I told her to reach out to me if she has any questions on that one. So the citizens petitions are presenting tomorrow at AdCom. But other than that, I think we'll, we'll vote on the warrant next time. I think just to remind everyone, we did not take positions on every article, you know, especially the Board of Selectmen ones, we would not have them on the warrant if we did not endorse them. So I think with that, that's, that's the plan from here. Any questions on that approach? No?
Cool.
Okay, yeah.
Just a question on the, the zoning articles. So presumably, if we went to advisory committee, we'd get the, sort of the rundown of what these are all about?
Yeah, they all had public hearings, too, so there's actually been a number of meetings on those.
So we're comfortable with these?
They're, they're sponsored by the, by the, we kind of went through this last time, remember?
Yeah, so we are.
Yeah, I'm, yeah, I mean, I'm comfortable with them, there's been, I know I did check in after the public hearings to see if there was any concern or anything, and I believe the report I had that was that there was no one at the public hearing. I think they did them all in one night.
So I'm just curious if anyone else on the board had any reservations about any of the zoning articles?
Is there one particular that you have concern on, or?
All of them, just in, in general, zoning articles, any issues, concerns from this, this board?
No.
I mean, I did read them, and I didn't, I didn't have any concerns, but I'm, I'm probably the worst one on this group, to really, because there's a lot of history here, I can tell. And, and, you know, if you go through the various articles, you know, you can see that there's, there's definitions, and it probably came from history and other things that have occurred.
So Dennis, I understand what you're saying, and I would say that what you're describing is sort of history and sort of backstory. Just reading the articles, you would have to probably dig into this, you know, attend the meetings, or do some research to see what changed, you know, so there's, oh, let's, let's have the bylaw read this way. So I haven't attended the meetings, and I'm, you know, I, I read the articles and nothing jumps out on me as being egregious, or, but, you know, I don't have a, a great sense of ownership of any of them either.
Well, I, I think if I could, through the chair, I, I think historically, we generally don't.
Yeah, we went through that last year.
You know, it, it's like a zoning, you know, those are the guys that are, and girls that are, that are, that are doing that work, and we generally don't have ownership. You know, they, they have ownership, they're the ones that are going to be making the presentation in front of AdCom and town meeting, and where, you know, from my point of view, allowing that board do what they're supposed to do. And if they find that there's definitions in their bylaws that they need redefining, then they're the ones that are working with it.
Yeah, so, all right, so at the same time, I'm just, I'm acknowledging the fact that I don't have any great sense of ownership of these zoning articles. It's, it's part of my responsibility, and I feel like that I'm not, I guess I'm sort of shirking my responsibility of providing this document to town meeting without, you know, I, so if, if we're just saying, okay, it's, it's someone else's responsibility and it's not mine, then.
And I think it is, and like, I have followed along, like, all their meetings are televised, I either watch live or I, I haven't, so unless there's a specific concern, it kind of sounds like, like a blanket statement, and I'm not sure what we're getting at.
I'm just, I wanted to ask if there was concerns from anyone else. I don't have any.
Okay.
Well, there were, there was some talk on, I mean, there's a big difference in cleaning up definitions and changing the, changing some of the zoning. And I, I believe one of the meetings, there was some question on why are we changing that now? Some of the word is, and, and I'm okay with the cleanup, as long as, you know, and I'm not accusing anybody of anything, but as long as we're not changing how those zoning goes, and we're just saying we're cleaning up, you know?
I don't think that we can even say that, though, because they're not our articles, and.
Oh, no, no, but.
There's been a number of public meetings.
But we're also, you're asking us if it's okay. And, and just to circle back around, I mean, even our articles, they just end up on here. Like, we didn't have any discussion on, on all of our articles, or, you know what I mean?
Fair point.
Like, I mean, the only one I, like, we, we had a big discussion on changing the name of our board, but, I mean, when you say, when, when you say, we don't have to, you know, we've put them on, and we've endorsed them, they, they just show up, I mean.
So I think that's unfair, I think that's unfair to say, though, because the time of meeting of, is the one that I had added, and I asked this board, just like I asked the select board, you know, I'd like to move forward with this, any concerns? And literally, it just, you know, coming out of COVID, I think we all learned, we need some flexibility in the way our bylaws are written, we don't have any. So I, I do, I, I hear what you're saying, but I feel like the time that we're voting on the warrant isn't the time to sit back and say, like, oh, wait, are we okay? Like, why don't we raise those sooner? Why don't, you know, we take questions? Why don't we go to the meetings?
It's a good idea.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, we could all, I guess we could all go to the meetings or go to all the meetings, that doesn't seem very efficient or productive, or all, you know, so, you know, and I may not have the time to go and sit at all those meetings. You know, I, it's not efficient for me to do that, you know? So I have more time at home, or, you know, I know they're televised, but, so, you know, I don't feel any great sense of ownership over this document, but if other folks don't have much, are, are comfortable with it, then I will be, too.
I think it's all about delegation, delegating to very effective people who know the areas, they're the contact, content experts, and they're bringing forth these changes to the select board, and we're just, we're, we are approving them because we have confidence in the people in the infrastructure that has produced these changes. That's how I feel about it.
Yeah, same.
I was just a little surprised at the, the depth of some of it, but, you know, I'm, I'm, you know, I'm not going to research it, though, at this point, you know? I mean, I think, I have confidence, I have great confidence in, you know, and I know, but I have great confidence in, in the people that are department directors in, in a lot of these areas that, to bring something forward like us, and, and to have us be confident in a lot of these areas to bring something forward like us and to have us be confident we can approve.
And the processes that it goes to the board of selectmen as an article, but then it gets deferred back to the board, the planning board for the ones, the experts who look at it.
And I think we went over this last year with, I don't remember if it was the accessory apartments or what, that, you know, while the board of selectmen own the warrants, you know, other depart, other boards, elected boards can bring things forward just like we can. So, you know, I don't think that it would be right or fair for us to say, you know, no planning board, or whoever it may be, you know, you're the experts, but we don't want to bring your article forward. I think we bring them forward on their recommendation and let them go to Town Meeting.
Yeah, could they bring whatever they wanted and just it ends up here and that's it, or?
I don't know that they would do that.
I don't know why anyone would do that either, unless they had an agenda that we didn't know about and then we just sort of said, well, it's from the planning board and I like them, and so-
I mean, there's a, there's a-
There it is.
There's a process though, like, remember, the planning board articles didn't go through because there wasn't a public hearing. So, there is municipal process where I don't think that they can just put something on and it just kind of flies through, like, it has to, I actually think there's more steps with the public hearing that's required on the zoning than a lot of the other.
Yeah, I think it would be, that would speak to an issue where there wasn't a good relationship between the planning board and the board of selectmen and the other boards and committees, where there was a sense of mistrust, if you will, where that would be an issue, but that's not the case. I mean, there was no evidence of that anywhere that I've seen that would cause that kind of concern, but, but, you know, process-wise, that's why it's less of an issue, Seth, and why it seems more, you know, more procedural than anything at this point, as opposed to substantive.
Seems very rubber-stampy to me.
And they did pull two articles, I believe, from the original, so, yeah. And I know, like, Historic, I saw on their agendas, they had their article on there as well.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not gonna get into a big discussion because I've said it before. I just wish we were more consistent. So, you know, I'm okay with not voting on, you know, taking a stand on every article, but some years we do certain ones, some years we don't, you know, you know, one year we were gonna, we were gonna have a, took an actual, have a conversation, took a vote on a certain citizens' petition one, and then the next year we decided not to. So, I really don't care which way we go, I just wish, I would like to see us be more consistent.
And I think, I think the decision was in- Yes, Steph, I think that's kind of unfair, because we made an intentional decision not to do that. And we did, we had, we probably talked for an hour about this last year, that all of us may be gone in three years, and maybe another board wants to do something different, but I think, under my leadership of this board, I have made an intentional decision to make sure, I actually went back and re-watched all the meetings. I went and read the minutes, so I have made a very intentional decision to be consistent. So, I think it's unfair to say that we've been haphazard over the last few years, because I know between last year, the Town Meeting that we just had, this one, we are taking a consistent approach.
So, we're not gonna vote on any articles?
Correct.
At all, okay. But yet we did vote on, you know, the one, the tax one, that's what I'm saying. We've picked and choose, so if we're gonna do that from now on, I'm great with that. Like I said, I didn't have a feeling either way, but it's a little unfair for me, I wasn't accusing, but we did vote on a few citizens' petition ones.
Are you going back like, yeah, like, we did last year.
Well, I've only been here three years.
So, we did it last year, so I've been chair for two years, and we've done it consistently, consistently in my time as chair, and I did go back and double-check just to make sure I wasn't losing my mind.
No worries.
To make sure that we did not vote on the citizens' petition last year.
Maybe I'm thinking of the first year.
Yeah, I think, so I think it's going back another one, so.
Yeah.
That's-
Right, and I think what you do is have a tendency to follow the chair's lead, and I probably thought of something different three years ago, depending on what that situation was, and I do kind of remember what that was, and I think we needed to discuss that a little bit more in-depth. But, yeah, I think we've been consistent the last two years.
Yeah, tried to be inconsistent, very consistent is the intent, so. All right. Any other comments or questions on that one, before we move on?
Nope.
Okay. All right, so, the next one is the revised budget for the southeastern regional district assessment, so it actually has been reduced, and this isn't anything that comes from our internal accounting, but instead it comes from the southeastern regional district into us. So, with that, we do have, we do have those adjusted numbers, they're here. Again, it's reduced by $91,801, so we do just have to approve the budget with that reduction from the budget that we voted on at last meeting. Does that make sense to everyone, what we're doing here?
Yep.
Okay. The actual, basically the actuals came in.
Yep.
Okay.
Getting closer to 3%.
Any questions, comments, discussion on this one before we take the vote, with the motion in here? No? Okay. All right.
Okay, motion to approve?
Wait, wait, wait.
It should have been updated, but the actual budget total is $93,413,089.
All right, mine has an update, let me refresh. But the amount I just announced, the $91,801 is correct?
That is correct, just the FY total of $93,504,890 is incorrect. It should be-
Right.
You have the right one, okay. Probably just depends when we clicked on the item.
This is the right one?
Should end in 584?
No, mine doesn't.
What, should it end in Christina?
089.
I'll bring it up, because I just refreshed. Apologies.
You should have got it right.
See, I just gave them the right number.
No, I still have the correct one.
So, read the, when you get to the-
That's the right one.
That's the correct motion.
Oh, the whole motion, okay.
Okay. Where'd you go, Mark? Motion to approve the revised FY '24 budget total of $93,413,089.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? They were gonna come before our next meeting, but I said it didn't really make sense after we have to have this voted on, so, I appreciate the offer from them though. All right, so, with that, we'll go into Town Manager's Update.
So, just to update everybody, we did have a situation today, which was very unnerving at times, but has worked out to be fine. But we had a potential incident at the schools today, but it turned out to be nothing but a false alarm, so which was good to see, but it was great to see that the, that everybody worked so well together, you know, the schools worked well together, all our response teams worked well together, and resulted in virtually no impact to the operations. In fact, they went back to normal operations. I think today was an MCAS day, so they had to go back right into the process again, so, into the school system again. So, all was well, which was great to hear, and hopefully, well, those kind of things will be minimized going forward. Why don't you say that the governor's office announced at the end of COVID-19 public health emergency in Massachusetts past week, so, good to see that we finally reached the end, and hopefully it stays that way. That's really the biggest news in that, in that direction. Town property use approvals, we've, the Horseshoe League on DP is on, will be on the DPW adjacent property from April through September from 6:15 to 9:00 p.m. Memorial Day, the ceremony will be on 5/29 at 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. And on the Town Common, and the Lions Club Festival will be on September 16th from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. on the Town Common. So, I know that there was another event that we were trying to work around, so we'll have to wait and see how that plays out.
Yeah, we're aware of the conflict and we have a resolution and people are on it.
Right, so, I do wanna, also, I just, this literally came in, this is hot off the presses, so, Ally Rodriguez was here earlier tonight, and she was awaiting confirmation, but she has been offered a new position as the Director of Veteran Services for the City of Taunton. So, she will be leaving us, regrettably, on April 14th. It will be her last day. And I'll just read the letter that is with bittersweet emotion, that I tell you that I am resigning my position as Director of Veteran Services for the Town of Foxborough. My last day is April 14th. I had every intention of telling you all in person tonight, but she didn't really have the final word yet, so she didn't want to, didn't want to say that, but she said, I can't even speak about, without, it's about this while crying, and there was no, there was not a snowball, a snowball's chance in hell that I was going to cry on live TV. Please believe me when I tell you that other than serving in the United States Army, this has been the best job a veteran like me could have ever had, ever dreamed of. I genuinely adore this town, its people, and most importantly, my veterans. Now, the day has gone by in the last four years where I didn't feel absolutely blessed to be here. From the bottom of my heart, I'd like to thank, oh, I thank you all for trusting me and caring for the Foxborough's veterans. Signed, Ally Rodriguez. So, we will certainly miss Ally. You know, we, she has been instrumental in so many different areas, and I think we, her, she's left an indelible mark on the community in so many different ways. She'll be a tough act to follow, so to speak, and she's done such a great job. And, you know, being a female veterans' agent, which is unique in many cases throughout the entire Commonwealth, well, she set a really high bar for folks to follow, and I think that's to her credit, and I'm sure that all of us here will certainly be grateful for what she's done here, and particularly the veterans are gonna miss her quite a bit. So, I want to say congratulations to her on a new position that, by the way, is about two miles from where she lives, and so, can't say that I miss, I blame her in that regard, so, best of luck to her and we'll miss her. I'm sure, we're not gonna see the last of her, we'll see a little bit before she leaves, but congratulations to Ally.
Yes, huge, huge loss to the town, but again, with the department kind of merged now, I hope it'll be a little bit easier.
Right.
With transition and, you know, if there's any gaps to fill temporarily, so, huge, huge loss, big gain for Taunton.
And we, I do want to say that we did meet with the Finance Director Subcommittee before the meeting tonight, and we'll have a recommendation for you at the next meeting, but the process went really well, you all, and so I want to say thanks, thanks to Seth for sitting in on that. It was helpful to have his insight on the candidates and thought it went really, really well, so. And this, and last but not least, this is my last official selectman's meeting. So, I'll be, it will be, actually, my official one will be next week when John, well, two weeks when John shows up, but this is my last working one, so I want to say thanks to everybody and to all of you for supporting me and the efforts here, and the efforts here in Foxborough. So, thanks.
And obviously, I attempted to mention that too, during our selectman's update too. I feel like it's Bill's last for like two months now.
I know.
Just be stretching on it.
It's just, it's just keep going and going and going.
It feels very, like, what's ceremonious when you're hanging on after your day.
It's like, I feel like it doesn't really matter now. It's like, just go, get out of here, will ya?
No, no, it does, and, you know, I really just, I know that we'll have a chance to tell you when you really do go, but I can't thank you enough for your leadership, your talent, you know, everything you've done for the Town of Foxborough, and I've really enjoyed working with you over the last five years, and you truly, truly will be missed, so.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that very much.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
So, with that, next time, next selectman's meeting will really be his last.
That's right.
His last.
And that'll be just a passing of the torch, if that's okay, so.
Right, so you plan to just kind of come and introduce him and then?
Yeah, just introduce him and then we'll probably remove name tags and slot his in and-
Ceremony of removing the-
Yeah, remove the name tag. Which I've never really done it that way, but I think it's kind of cool to do it that way, so.
Yeah.
It's kind of passing, passing of the torch, if you will, so.
All right, all right, great. All right, so moving on to selectman's update, I saw Christina started to post some hydrant flushing notices, and she, it's hard to read the map, so thank you for putting the streets on there. I think it was starting up near Route One.
Yes, Zone Six near Route One.
Zone Six, like that Route One area will be first, and then it will keep going, so. And then Saturday is Foxborough Cable Access's Volunteer Appreciation and Recognition Night. Could not miss the opportunity to thank our friends from Cable Access, not only for our meetings, but every meeting in town, all the sports, all the music events, the concerts, the, just, the list goes on and on. So, we have Mr. Beck back there in the booth this evening, and just want to thank him. I know he's on the board there as well, along with Mr. Weber and all the rest of the volunteers that make it possible and make it happen, so I just wanted to take a moment and thank them as well.
Could I have a side note on that?
Yeah, yes, of course.
You know, when you talk to other selectmen in other towns about, you know, our meetings being on TV, you know, cable access, and a lot of towns that don't have near the capability that Foxborough Cable Access has.
Yeah.
I mean, you alluded to a bunch of it, you know.
It's absolutely true.
I mean, us and, you know, all the other committees that are televised and all the sporting events, and they're always at the parades, and they're at, you know, at the top of the common, and it really is an incredible bunch of people.
It really is.
It can seem so seamless, by the way. You don't even know they're there.
Volunteers, many of them are volunteers.
It's hard work to do that, so, so thank you, Paul.
Thank you, Mr. Beck.
And even like little things, like we now have our HD channel, which if you're a frequent watcher like myself, you'll know that, the way the meetings are indexed to be able to go to a certain point, even the home screen, so we have our program schedule here, this is not the new one, but Mike is rolling out some new home screen that has activity, that has events going on and, you know, news, and there's just, there's so much that's going on when you really pay attention and see everything that they do. So, cannot thank them enough.
It's even interesting, you watch this screen now, that used to be a delayed, this used to be a delayed screen, that was the live screen, and now they're both synced, so it's pretty good how that works.
It's pretty amazing, so. Did anyone else have anything to mention under selectman's update? No? All right. So, we do have a couple action items to close out our rather short meeting this evening.
Be careful, we're not done yet.
Right? Hold on, I'm like, uh-oh, is anything controversial? I don't know.
Okay, we're ready for the Boyd and Library?
Yes, we are.
A motion to accept a donation of $3,549 from Lakeview Pavilion for museum passes for Boyd and Library.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
The other veterans' markers? Sorry, Doc, I thought Doc needed a pen.
I did.
Three tonight.
Pass all two pence.
You.
On to nine, 9.2.
Yep.
A motion to accept donations totaling $1,400 through the Historical Commission for new veterans' markers from Bill Sides, $200, Janet Haynes, $100, Mary Ellen Doona, $100, and Foxborough VFW, $1,000.
Second.
All right, any further discussion?
Yeah, real quickly, I think some have gone up already too, if I'm not mistaken. I've seen a couple of-
Yeah, I think there's one, at least one on the common. I think the one at the corner of Beach Street I noticed.
And I think, I think Market and Union?
Market and Union, yeah, there's definitely a couple. They really stand out because they look so beautiful.
Yeah, absolutely.
When you drive or walk by them, for sure. All right, so, thank you for your generosity on those, so, all those in favor?
Aye.
D.R.I.
Yep.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, good evening, everyone. See you April 11th.